Township manager to give the meeting procedures and to call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members of the board staff and public for joining this evening for the June 17th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the Chair calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Members of the public attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the Chair, they may unmute their microphone for their for a question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Mr. Heller?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Chair, you have a call.
All right, thank you. So, the Board of Supervisors did meet in an executive session on a matter of personnel on Friday, the 13th. And the next item of announcements we have this evening, a proclamation for CADA's 50th anniversary. I do have the proclamation in hand. I would offer anyone that wants to read it to read it. I don't know if you happen to have it, Mr. Patterson, since you were one of our former representatives of the CADA Board. I wanted to give you the honor to read it if you would like, otherwise I can go ahead and read it.
Why, thank you. Proclamation of the Town of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, recognizing 50 years of service by the Center Area Transportation Authority. Whereas since its founding in 1974, the Center Area Transportation Authority, CADA, has served as a cornerstone of public transportation in Center County, providing affordable, safe, accessible, and reliable transit services to residents, students, workers, and families across the region. And whereas over the past five decades, CADA has expanded its service area, enhanced its fleet and operations, and now proudly stands as the third largest public transit system in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas, CADA has played a vital role in supporting regional mobility, economic development, environmental sustainability, and overall quality of life in Center County through its commitment to innovation, equity, and public service. Now, therefore, we proclaim that the Board of Supervisors of Ferguson Township, Center County, Pennsylvania, does hereby recognize and celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Center Area Transportation Authorities, and extends its gratitude for CADA's outstanding contributions to public transportation and to the well-being of our community. We proclaim this 17th day of June 2025. And with that, Mr. Chair, move to adopt the proclamation.
All right, do we have a second?
This is Matt, all second.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Patterson, second by Mr. Heller. Any discussion, comments? I was gonna say, we also do have some representatives, I guess both current and former of CADA, if they wanted to give any words. Not seeing, I was gonna say, this came forward, looks like to commemorate CADA's 50th anniversary, they are going to do a nice, like memorial or, you know, just visual within their offices with all the member municipalities and their proclamations recognizing this important milestone. Always hear so many stellar things about CADA. Seem to be right, right up there with the state, sometimes even surpassing our partners in Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, which is quite, quite, quite an impressive feat for a, for probably one of the lower-end-ended-dense municipalities in the state of Pennsylvania, so. No further comments. All those in favor of adopting the proclamation say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Okay. Proclamation is adopted. Thank you. Next item will be public comment. So, at this time, any member, anyone from the public that wants to address the board for items not on the agenda may do so at this time. We ask when you come forward to state your name and neighborhood of residence and to try to keep your remarks to five minutes. We'll start in the room. Not seeing anyone in the room, anyone online? All right, not seeing any. Approval of the minutes from the June 3rd, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting pending no corrections. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
This is Matt, so move.
And do we have a second?
This is Lisa, all second.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Heller, second by Ms. Strickland. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say no? All right. Minutes have been approved. Item 5.1, the reports and presentations for diversity, equity, and inclusionary activities of knowledge, acknowledgements. This month is National Caribbean American Heritage Month, Pride Month, and Immigrant Heritage Month. And Juneteenth will be this Thursday. Then, for item 5.2, tonight we have CADA, a presentation discussion on the Ferguson Township's local match. And I believe we will be recognizing a CEO, Dave Richel, who was in attendance this evening, to give that presentation. Okay, I was gonna say, did staff have any opening?
No opening remarks, other than there is a presentation that we have that we'll bring up here on the screen as we welcome our interim Executive Director of CADA, David Richel. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, and thank you very much for that kind of passage of the resolution. It'll look very nice in our lobby with the others. And if you heard, we, years ago, did a photograph of CADA out of Beaver Stadium. I think it was, how many years ago? Do you remember?
Probably been 38?
Yeah, so it was an aerial photo of CADA buses in a kind of fan-out with CADA employees. We recreated that this year, a slightly bigger fleet. And so, we're gonna put both of those in our lobby with these proclamations as kind of a 50th anniversary celebration. So, thank you very much. So, I'd like to chat with you about what's going on at CADA before we ask you for a check. Next slide, please. So, a, this is mostly about our budget, but also about some highlights about what's going on at the authority right now. Our budget for the upcoming year, I kind of call this a best-case, worst-case budget. It's a best-case budget in the sense of if we can do everything that we hope we can do, this is what it will cost. And it's a worst-case budget in the sense of this is what it will cost. We often are not able to implement everything because of personnel vacancies, and we're still working on driver shortages. But if we could do everything we'd like to do this year, our budget will be just over $29 million. As in past years, the proportions of where these funds come from are about the same. About 60% of that money comes from state and federal sources. We get just under $6 million from contract revenues. And within contract revenues are contributions our friends at Penn State make. They pay just around $3 million for the services that we operate just on campus, the Blue Loop, White Loop, and the Red Link. And they provide that subsidy because we operate higher frequency for those services than we normally would. And we also operate what we call open door, which is that nobody pays a fare on those routes so that we can keep moving quickly. And residents also enjoy free fare on those routes if they want to use them. Your contribution there, $905,000, is the local match from the five member municipalities. And you'll notice there that we have in purple, a budget deficit projected this year of $2.1 million. I say budget deficit projected because should we actually spend this much money, which we haven't in six years, we could potentially have a deficit. More likely, we'll probably finish the year with a expenditure probably around $27 million, so that we won't actually have a deficit with our expenditures. However, if we do, we still have contingency funds available from COVID relief that we have invested, so we have money to cover that. So, this is a very solid budget. I'm happy to say that unlike most of our colleagues in the state, we are not concerned about an impending fiscal cliff. We have reserves beyond these, and even if the state is not able to give us any increase in funding this year, our budget will still be solid. Incidentally, this is also planning for no increase at all from the state. Pendott's not been able to tell us if or how much of an increase we'll get, so our plan was no increase at all. So, next slide, please. A few highlights from this year's budget. One of the things that we have not done since 2020 is a fare increase. So, this budget does assume that we are going to increase our base fare from the current $220 to $250. That would impact cash fares at the door, and would also proportionally impact any passes that we sell. This fare would only impact our, our big buses, the fixed route service, and our CADA GO services, our CADA Ride Paratransit Service for folks with disabilities and senior citizens. That's governed by a slightly different fare protocol, and we just raised that fare in '23? Yes. So, this would not impact that fare. We also were happy to report that our fixed route ridership for the past year was up 3.5% overall. And you may recall, I talked to you previously about how we redesigned some of our routes and really increased our, our service frequency. And that's had some pretty fantastic results. The Wapalani Drive Corridor, what we call our R Route, that's up by 16% over last year. Our corridor on Martin Street is up 10%. And really just many increases where we've adjusted our services, and we're very happy about that. We've also been able to negotiate a 6% average increase with our apartment complexes. These are apartment complexes that bypasses and give them to their residents, so that's been a revenue increase for us. And our Penn State contract looks like it's going to have a 6% increase as well. So, able to get some additional revenue sources to help offset our costs. Next slide. Some service changes that we're looking at, that we've actually implemented for the summer. We'll go with the next slide, please. So, you may recall, last year, we introduced the first time our summer youth route. That went from downtown, out College Avenue, then down Westerly Parkway, and then back into town. We're trying out a different route for our summer youth route. And sorry, the green doesn't show up very well. But this essentially starts out on College Avenue, goes to Atherton, down to Westerly Parkway, up Westerly Parkway, then around back to Wapalani, and then all the way down to University Drive, up University Drive, and onto campus. We've already had some pretty significant positive feedback for this new route. And this is a route that we may actually keep in place after the summer is over, if we have the bus operators to maintain this. This combined with our summer youth program, our summer pass program, which this year is free, has been resulted in a significant increase in young people coming in and using the system, especially with their bicycles, which is just fun. Next slide, please. We've also expanded some weekend service, what we're calling the HB Route, kind of a combination of the two. The dotted line areas, it's mostly service that we've added on Saturdays and Sundays where we didn't have service during the summer because we're reduced service. Next slide. I mentioned before, our summer youth pass program, this is something we do every summer, but this is the first year you've offered it completely for free. It's normally $30-some, and we've given out 10 times as many passes so far as we have in past years, and to our delight, people are using them. You know, we're trying to bring people in, make them transit users of tomorrow. You can use this on the fixed route service, and you can use it on CADA GO, and people are using it on both. Next slide, please. So, one of the expansions that we are planning for the coming year, we were very happy with the expansion that we did to CADA GO last year, and your township was a recipient of that, and we're gonna expand it further. Throughout the coming year, we are essentially going to expand CADA GO to the entire Center Region. So, for the first time ever, if you live in the Center Region, you will have access to CADA. You'll either be able to ride one of our fixed route buses, which would be served by the area that's not shaded gray. That's, those are areas that are fairly close to a fixed route bus. And all the gray shaded areas are areas that are really too far for a passenger to catch one of our big buses. All of that area will be served by CADA GO, the on-demand service. Next slide, please. Couple other things that we've done this year. We implemented a new app for the CADA GO service, and that's working very well. Our monthly ridership for CADA GO service is about 2,700 rides a month. Almost 98% of the time, we meet passengers' requests. And our rating for these services, they're running 99% on time, and passengers are consistently rated 4.5 to 5 stars. So, very happy with the service. We are gonna be discontinuing the Beeline service. This is the service we created last year for Belfont and Benner Township. They've opted not to stay with the CADA system at all. So, as of June 30th, all services provided by CADA in that area will end. We are making arrangements, or we've made arrangements with the county transportation system for residents in the Center Region who want to travel to Belfont for county business, or to go to courts, or things like that. We are contacting the passengers who've been using the services that we have, and if anybody does need to get over there, they'll ride the county service, they'll pay the fare they were paying with us this year, and then CADA will pay the rest of the fare of the county program. Next slide, please. A few other quick things. 50-year anniversary, again, thank you very much. We are implementing a new fare system. As of August 1st, you'll be able to use a fare media on your phone, and also paper fare media that you scan whenever you get on the bus for removing all of our old fare boxes, which are 30 years old and in need of being removed. By September, we expect you to be able to pay by credit card on any of our services. So, that should be a big improvement. Let's see. Oh, our expansion of the apartment pass program. We did this over the past year. Previously, if you had looked in an apartment, you could only ride one particular route back and forth into town. This past year, we opened that up so that you could use the pass on any route. And ridership has gone up significantly, and it's also helped add value to the pass. So, when we ask for the apartment complexes to contribute a little bit more, they'd be more willing to do so because their residents value the pass more. Next slide, please. We've replaced all of our bus stop signs over the past year. Hopefully, you've seen those, and we're gonna be adding to those. Right now, it's just a white sign, but during the coming year, we're gonna be adding little colored route flags on each sign so you can see which buses stop at those stops. We've also started an assessment of all the bus stops in our system. We're working with Pendott to do that. We just got the assessment report, and we're developing standards so that CADA will have a standard package of amenities that goes with all different kinds of stops, depending on the ridership at that stop. It's gonna be implemented over the next probably 10 years, so it's a very long-term project, but it'll be a significant effort that will involve all of the member municipalities, as well as CADA's efforts. And a couple of things that we're working on in the coming year, we are looking very seriously at some kind of on-demand service back and forth to the airport. I know in the past, CADA has tried to do scheduled services, and because airline schedules change all the time, that never really worked. So, we'd like to replace that with an on-demand service. So, we're gonna be working with the airport authority on that. And we're also looking to work with the MPO on services to train stations in Tyrone and in Lewistown. This also, our concept is, this would be an on-call, on-demand service that you pre-schedule a day before. And we'd like to get this service up and running during the coming year and see what kind of demand there is for it, and that may guide additional future efforts for further expansion of that. And that's it. Next slide is what we'll be asking for whenever the agenda item comes up for approval. So, our request from Ferguson Township this year will be for $152,586 as your local match. That's just under 9%, 8.76% increase over last year. Not as big an increase as we asked for last year. And there's also a capital match of $16,300 and some dollars as well. So, happy to answer any questions you may have. Yes?
What does it cost to install a bus shelter?
That's an excellent question. I don't know off the top of my head, but I can tell you that there isn't a fixed number for that. It depends on the site, whether or not we can just put a bus shelter on a sidewalk that's already there, or if we have to install a concrete pad first and then install the shelter. When we upgrade bus stops, because of the Americans with Disabilities Act regulations, if we add any amenities to a bus stop, then we have to do everything. So, we have to put down the shelter, we have to make sure we have sidewalks to the closest street crossings, do all of those things. So, we have to do a whole package. And to guide us as to where and when to do that, we've been looking at ridership numbers on stops. So, the stops that get our attention first will be high ridership stops where we don't have amenities, so that we can, you know, provide services where people are riding.
Thank you. Good question on the cost of establishing a shelter at a bus stop. Any board questions for Mr. Richel?
I don't really have any questions. I've, you know, knowing that we're being asked for a little bit more than we were, or, you know, was that 8% more than we were last year, I'm pleased with the changes. I think, especially here in the expansion of the CADA GO, it's so important for us where we know we're lacking service. If you look at that picture of the gray area, it's a large portion of Ferguson Township. So, I think that's really important to point out, that increase. And then also, the apartment pass usage, expanding that so that they can take more than one route. I think that was always, you know, something that was discussed, and we want these apartment buildings to buy passes and have as part of their rent or, you know, agreement with the tenants. And so, I think that was really nice to hear. And then the youth passes, that's fantastic that they're free this year. So, that's been encouraging, especially with the summer route that was available last year. I'd be so interested in, in numbers on that. And I think in our usage too, and Ferguson Township's usage on both the fixed routes and CADA GO, I think the more data we can get on those things, the better. It helps us understand the numbers that we get asked for. So, I think, I think that...
Absolutely. If I could offer, so, my tenure at CADA is coming to an end. I was brought in as an intern for six months or so, and that was about three years ago. So, we've identified a new CEO to be taking over. He'll be joining CADA on the 15th of July, and we're planning about a three-to-four-month turnover period. So, I was hoping to come back with him, so you could all meet him. And when we do that, why don't we bring some statistics for you?
That would be great. I know this board has always enjoyed being able to see those things, and, you know, to be able to link those to our contribution. And then the only other things I wanted to mention were, so, the CADA GO app, so is that a new app for CADA GO?
It was a new app a year and a half ago.
Yeah, okay, so this is not any new?
No, we, we implemented that the middle of last year. This is the first full year that we've operated with it, yes.
Okay. And then, you mentioned working on transportation to the train stations. And so, I just wanted to mention that that's appreciated by also the MPO, who's gonna be working on that. So, the cooperation between CADA and the MPO on that study that they're gonna do about trying to get easier access to train service, I think will benefit both.
Absolutely. We, we knew that was coming, so we were thinking on our end, really already thinking about what's the best way to kind of put our toe in the water. And as you can imagine, any service to either Tyrone or Lewistown is gonna be very expensive because it's a long way, and just going over to pick up one person is gonna take a vehicle out of service for hours to go and do that. So, we thought, well, let's try it as an on-call service, work with Amtrak so that people know they have that as an option, and see what kind of demand we get. And based on that, then figure out what might work further in the future.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
My pleasure.
And echoing everything, plus one that Lisa just said there, and I just want to say how much I appreciate the youth passes as well. Because having a son that is going, "It's free, and look at my car, and I can go anywhere!" And it's like, yes, go ahead and explore. I want to say, it's not only good for independents, so that they can feel comfortable. I know the ride, the buses are safe and reliable, but it also helps with future uses of mass transit, no matter where they move, no matter where they live. The comfort that they can build, the idea that these, that it's reliable, that it's safe, I appreciate that. And then, of course, that then feeds into climate goals with mass transit and everything else. So, I really applaud you not only from, you know, allowing and enabling the, the students to travel more freely, but also for doing all those other benefits, really, that are downstream to enabling that. So, thank you again for making that.
Yes, our pleasure. We consider that really part of our mission. In fact, one of the things I never realized when I came first to CADA is that part of the Penn State student experience for many students who come here is learning how to ride public transit. Because many Penn State students come from, don't come from large cities, so their first real experience with the public bus system is CADA. So, we take that pretty seriously as part of our mission of teaching people how to use public transit, so.
Awesome.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go online. Start with Mr. Patterson.
Just wanted to say, well done. And my only question is, the plan for increasing ridership, kind of month over month, year over year, do we, do we have that and that, that kind of marketing to get sticky with more people?
Well, with... Well, with, as you know, Omari, we do our big service changes in August, whenever we go back to full service when the students come back. And we have a marketing campaign aimed at that. We're further refining the changes that we made last year to increase our service, and we've learned something over the past year, actually from an intern who came to CADA from Penn State, that many students on campus, I guess I have a college student, so I should understand this, they don't make the connection that the CADA buses on campus are the same CADA buses that are riding out in the community, so they never really connect that they might actually be able to ride off-campus using CADA. So we're going to try to capitalize on that, and we're expecting to use TikTok, which we've been told is the only way to effectively reach students. So we are exploring some areas to kind of increase awareness of some of our services and get people to use them. And there is a marketing plan that's going to be implemented with the expansion of the CADA go services, so people who don't currently have access to that will know about it. Ms. Stevens?
Thank you. I just want to echo what everybody else has already said. Thank you very much for your responsiveness to public input and the changes and always thinking of creative ways to serve us all. I, like Lisa and everyone had said, I'm really excited about the Apartment Pass and the expanded use of that for everybody, and really excited about the on-demand service for looking into that, for on-demand service connecting to Amtrak. And I think once you start letting the public know, and particularly Penn State students, I think you're going to find that that's going to be a popular service. So thank you for all of that.
Sure, our pleasure. That's our goal. One other thing I forgot to mention that Matt would go with your comment, we are actually is going to be switching to renewable CNG in the next several months. So we're already green, we're going to get even greener after that. And I don't know if you heard, but we had that storm back in May that kind of knocked us all on our back foot. CADA actually provided fuel to the boroughs, the university, and the county solid waste management authority, all of whom's vehicles use CNG, and none of whom could refuel because they had no power to refuel. So we became the fueling station for the region as well. It was the surprising ways in which you serve the community.
Very cool. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's great to hear, because that was a rather chaotic event.
It was.
Yeah, not to get too much into details on understanding that you only have limited capacity, but looking at that youth pass and the youth route, like where are they coming from, where are they going? I think, you know, tying things to specific municipalities or even amenities like our parks or pools, you know, could be very valuable information to the elected officials. Also, very nice to hear about, you know, looking into the connections to Passenger Rail. That's been a very strong passion of mine, but I've realized it's been a strong passion within all municipalities. I hear my name keeps being brought up outside of here, either through connections or somebody or another elected official is like, "Yeah, I talked about you." Like, okay. But yeah, I was going to say, I've had some experience with Amtrak partnering with other systems. I know if you book a ticket to Philadelphia, your ticket will be accepted through Septa to like the city center. You can also, I guess you have to do it by phone, but you can also book a Amtrak ticket to Atlantic City, where Amtrak will take you to Philly, and then New Jersey Transit will take you the rest away to Atlantic City and bring you back, whether you win or lose.
Probably good to buy your ticket before you go to the scene.
I usually do, yes. Of course, I want to make sure I have my ticket, otherwise, you know, my vacation's kind of ruined. I was going to say, that was pretty smarter than last year. My wife and I went on Labor Day weekend, and the governor actually made it free that weekend, so we only needed to get to Philadelphia and then free ride to Atlantic City. Any other questions or comments for...
Great, thank you.
I was going to say, thank you for your report.
My pleasure. I'll be staying in case you have any questions whenever you consider the resolution for the match.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So item 5.3, the Authorities, Boards, and Commissions Reports. Tonight, we have the Spring Creek Watershed Commission Report, and that will be presented by Mr. Kevin Abbey.
I have to admit that brings back memories listening to CADA's 50 years, because I was year nine through 20, so. But very well done. My purpose today is to make a presentation about the Spring Creek Watershed Commission. And as my report indicated, at the end of quarter number one, March 27th, we had our second annual State of the Watershed meeting that was held at Millbrook, and it was very successful. It has led to a number of strengthened relationships and further coordination coming out of the Watershed Commission. We now have a stormwater management work group that is made up of municipal employees, nonprofits, state agency, and the private sector to look at how those of us concerned about Spring Creek and the management of stormwater and the thermal effect that that can have on Spring Creek. So that was a very positive situation. I'd also like to mention that following the announcement and step-down of the AmeriCorps program, that was something that the Watershed Commission was directly engaged with the township on. We had two AmeriCorps members, one who was able to complete her term. Caitlin Mooney graduated from Penn State in December and then stayed with us and could ramp up her position. Elise Johnson, whose her term of service with AmeriCorps was set to run through the first week of August, but with that cessation in AmeriCorps, there was a 10-week period. She has done such a wonderful job and has been so helpful for the Watershed Commission. The decision was made that for the remainder of her 10-week service contract, that we would employ her as an independent contractor. And then between now and our bimonthly meeting, which will be the third Wednesday in July, we're working on a budget, and it's anticipated we'll be able to keep Elise through 2026 with a careful use of the budget that we have. So that's a positive from our standpoint. In addition to those two kind of major things, I included in my report what we've been active in in 2025, and there's a long list of things. I did mention one, and that was the Stormwater Work Group that is now underway, and we're very happy about that. But you can see that we are building and expanding our coordination and participation with member municipalities as well as nonprofits throughout the watershed. And we've also helped Keystone Water Resources strengthen their WRMP, their stream and spring monitoring program. We're happy about that. And also with Elise's timeless energy, and we've been involved in a number of things with Trot Unlimited, stream cleanups, help with their fall red count as they do each year to evaluate in Spring Creek the trout reds. And I guess I'll leave it at that. You've been active, and if anyone has questions, we've sort of agreed that I will come back on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis, excuse me. And so I'm always happy to interact. Lisa has been a joy to work with as the board's representative to the Watershed Commission. And any questions, I'm happy to field.
Well, start online. Any questions from Ms. Stevens or Mr. Patterson? I take it...
None here.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, in the room, Ms. Strickland and Mr. Heller.
Well, thanks, Kevin. And I just can't tell you how much Kevin does for the commission. He does so much. And I wanted to comment on Elise, too. She just really has done so much work. It was really disappointing to lose that funding for her position, and the discussion was only about how can we keep her on and allow her to finish, you know, at least what she's doing at this point, you know, with this current budget and then plan for next year. She's just, has done so many things and is involved in so many activities that the commission's doing. And I did want to point out, too, that at the meetings, the first half maybe is the business meeting, and the second half, I think it usually starts, I want to say, maybe it's 7:30 or sometime like that, is an educational portion. So if you click on that meeting, you can go right to the educational portion of that. And we've just had some great talks from different professionals about various activities, and not just in the Center Region or in the county, you know. I think our last one was from out of the area, so.
Yes. The last one was, given the primary election, we met in the township library, so we couldn't do CNET broadcasting from there. But as a rule, the educational presentation comes after the business meeting and is included with the CNET recording of the meeting, so it's readily available from that point on, yeah.
Yeah, and they're just great, so I'd encourage you to just check them out. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, as you can tell from my earlier comments, I love education and outreach. And to see them bulleted out here, how many community events that you're hosting, that you're putting yourselves out there, that you're increasing knowledge and awareness, I truly appreciate that. I know we're going to hear more about it from the library later tonight. I'm going to challenge SCBWA and UAJA to find ways, right? Because that's the other part of it, too. Like, how do we go ahead and engage and find that outreach? And truly, I love seeing this list, and thank you for providing that list of the accomplishment that makes it very clear for us.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would just say, you know, appreciate both Caitlin and Elise's commitment despite the given unfortunate circumstances, and also the collaboration to recognize and see what you can do to retain that talent and just make the most out of what we got, so.
It made a huge difference. Our organization was all volunteer, essentially, and then Elise and Caitlin came along and just, it was an infusion of youthful energy that was wonderful. And I tip my hat to them for, like you say, their commitment to community service. It's important.
Thanks. All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have the State College Borough Water Authority Report. Oh, yes, we have Mr. Ford Stryker in attendance this evening for that.
Yeah, hi. I'm phoning my report in. Anyway, yeah, the State College Borough Water Authority is, you know, just plugging away, you know, providing water as needed. I don't think there's a whole lot of note to report. However, I just got an amended agenda for their Thursday meeting, and they're going to be discussing the Rock Springs Sales Agreement at the meeting. I presume that'll be public in public, although sometimes they discuss stuff like that in executive session, so I'm not sure what I'm going to learn. It's possible sentries knows more about it than I do. But anyway, you know, they're obviously considering that. And I think that concludes my report unless somebody has some questions.
All right, starting in the room, any questions for Mr. Stryker? Anyone online?
Hi, Omari here. I guess, is there anything that we don't know with regard to Rock Springs that is publicly shareable, that situation?
Yeah, I mean, so the short answer is I don't know of anything. You know, again, perhaps some of the township staff is more plugged into it than I am, but, you know, I know there's discussions about it at every meeting, and it sounds like they're working their way toward a solution, but aside from that, I don't really have any details.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for your report, Mr. Stryker.
All right, Jeremy, thanks. You guys have a great evening.
You too. All right, we've got Sklo Center Region Library Report, and tonight we are joined by Ms. Barbara Zep and Lisa Collins. And whoever wanted to go first? Ms. Zep, you are on mute.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just make myself available in case there's any questions. Barbara will go ahead and give the report. Or she might act it out, and I might talk. Because she is pretty awesome at that, so. Barbara, in addition to being the Ferguson Township representative, is also our library board president, so we really appreciate all the time that she's given to serve our community in that capacity. And feel free, Barbara, if it's giving you a struggle, just let me know, and I'll go ahead and just start it off.
Oh, there we go.
Ah, yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so basically, you have the report in front of you, but I can go over just the, you know, the summary of it, and that is that Ferguson Township, as always, is a huge user of the library. They seem to be, as in the past, checking out about 30% of all cog circulation, and that's pretty typical of Ferguson. And we use the remote book drops pretty well, too, both on the Giant and Pine Grove Mills. Now we're heavy into the summer reading program, mostly for kids, but there's also a summer reading program for teens and adults, and it's well-attended, again, by Ferguson. About one-fourth of all users are Ferguson Township. We have some indie authors that have been speaking and available to the public. And also, we're very, very proud and hopeful about our new public computing system. We needed an upgrade, and we certainly got it, and we hope that you'll come into the library and see the new computers and how easy they are to use, as well as a new printing system by which you can send things from home to the library to print and then come in and get them. We're very proud of, the Center gives donations, and how supportive the whole community has been, obviously, particularly and including Ferguson Township. And the last item is that, hey, if you want to look at a ma- And the last item is that, hey, if you want to look at a magazine online, you can do it through the library. Lots of, lots of available magazines that you wouldn't think would be available are. So, any questions, concerns?
Anyone online had any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for your report. And for some weird reason, I take great pride in knowing that Ferguson uses the library the most. It's one of those. So thank you for that.
Yes, we are proud of that as well.
I do want to, I do want to-
Nothing here.
And I do want to encourage everyone, if you haven't tried the new app, the Spot Global Printing, we are receiving rave reviews from our community regarding that. So essentially, you can go ahead, use the app to send your print job to the library when it's convenient for you to do so at whatever time or wherever you are. And then you can go ahead and come to the library, pick it up, and pay for it. So it's easy to use, very accessible, and as always, we're absolutely willing to sit down with anybody who's interested in it and wants to know a little bit more on how to use it, we can walk you through it. But that's been very, very popular. In addition, as Barbara had mentioned with the magazines, this has just incredible numbers. We are so excited. I just got some new numbers today. We were looking at 643 checkouts with just, it started June 1st. We're already beyond 850 now, as of today. So people are really enjoying interacting with those magazines. There's children's magazines as well as magazines for adults and teens, so something for everybody. No wait, always available, and it makes it easy to get your next subscription, so very excited about those things. In addition, Barbara had mentioned those numbers for summer, the summer reading program. I was there when we did our summer reading program kickoff, and it was incredible. We had over 1,200 kids and families come through the doors of our children's department. And when you feel that sort of energy coming from the community and just that chaos of excitement, I mean, there were balloon animals everywhere, we had one of the dairy princesses. It was, it was outstanding. But it was just such a huge success and what a great way for everybody to come together and get started, to read together as a community during the summer, so. Just wanted to go ahead and highlight those just a little bit more because, man, I am so proud to be a part of that. It was pretty incredible.
Yeah, Mr. Heller?
If I may, I am ecstatic to hear the numbers that are coming in from the library. That is fantastic. And glad, to Patty's comments, that Ferguson Township is leading that. I will also say, and I encourage folks, explore the calendar of the library. You will see, and I pulled it up right here, Discovery Day, Elementary Explorers, Tuesday Book Club, Board Game Camp for Teens, Everybody Storytime, read it, watch a movie, like, there's so many things going on because of the library. It's not just a place with books. It's about the community. And everything that you do and the staff does, truly, I appreciate that because it really is bringing folks together, so thank you.
Appreciate that very much. And I have to say, a plug for CADA, we are getting rave reviews from a lot of the youth that are using that pass to then come downtown and enjoy the library. So what an incredible connecting point there. That was really, really neat to see, and I know it's making a big difference in a lot of folks' lives, so.
Cool. Awesome.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. Yeah, I guess since we haven't met in general form yet, I haven't got to see, was there a big stuffed animal or something being given away this year?
Of course, there's a giant stuffed animal. We benefit tremendously by the hockey team, Penn State Hockey. They have their day where everybody brings the giant stuffed animals and then they throw them onto the ice. And then those hockey players come into the library with just these bags and these huge, you know, stuffed animals. And then we also have Growing Tree, which makes generous donations of those large stuffed animals. So they are absolutely at the library and the kids are putting in all of those tickets for those stuffed animals. And we have experiences, you know, baton twirling and all sorts of different things, soccer lessons, different things for people to explore, so some really good stuff going on.
No wonder they're all flocking over there on the bus. They've been raining up a storm and they got tickets to put in.
You are the place to be.
It is pretty, it's pretty great right now, so.
Yeah, and I was going to say, you're probably benefiting a little bit from, from the weather, even though I have-
Shh.
Well, now it's going to be too hot, so don't be coming down to read more books and get free air conditioning next year.
I was going to say, which is why we needed those two new HVAC units that were installed in April that came from, you know, funds from our community, from the Hamer Foundation as well as municipalities and all of the individuals who donated to that. We are going to put those to really good use, so appreciate it.
Thanks. All right. Anyone have anything else? Thank you so much for-
Thank you, appreciate it.
-joining us tonight, and thank you, Ms. Zip, for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And our final report, the UHJA report, and we got Mr. Glebe here tonight.
First, I wanted to thank everybody on the board for coming out for the tour. It certainly makes talking about UHJA a lot easier and more sensible. And as you could see when you were out there, there's a lot of really aggressive development. I mean, we're going to be able to take Tyrone sludge, Belphon sludge, maybe some other people's, and run it through the dryer and put it in the digester with total methane capture, which will then either be used on-site. It'll be separated, so we'll have a revenue stream with the CO2 and, and the methane sold to the gas company, so. But the fact that it's not going into the environment is, I think, a tremendous feature for all of us. And I know we're all contributors to the UHJA in one way or another, not just in rates. Speaking of rates, the rate subcommittee is still in process, trying to reevaluate the rates and charges, and hopefully we're making some good progress there. The 2024 audit was done, and somehow I got sconded into being one of the people on the audit committee, and I just took up space, honestly. Way over my head, but it's done judiciously. Another thing I noticed was that the patent crossing plans for the Kava restaurant are in, so that's moving along. So these are Corey's notes. Ozone disinfection. Currently, the UHJA is still using ultraviolet for final disinfection for the water that goes to Spring Creek. Ozone will not only reduce the energy requirements, but also provide enhanced disinfection, destruction of pharmaceuticals, and endocrine interruptors. I would have thought that the ozone would have been online by now, but there's been various contractor problems and things that seemed like they were unavoidable, but that's moving along. So Corey says the ozone system reduced annual operating expenses by $110,000 based on 2021 electric rates. UV is a real energy hog, plus the bulbs are expensive and they wear out with regularity, so big advantage there. Well, anaerobic digester and sludge dryer, I was at CBICC with Corey and Pam on, well, last Tuesday, I think, and for their board meeting. And so I got an update from Jason Werke about the digester and dryer now is probably going to be more likely to go online March of 2026, so. And the UOL saw the pit with the screws in it that separate the packaging from food waste, so I don't think that's that complicated, that, that's, that'll be ready. So Meeks Lane Act 537 Plan Special Study, project's been split into two phases, one to be developed under a 537 plan, special study to address immediate needs in the West Patent Township Greyswoods area, and a second phase, which would include a regional Act 537 plan update should the center region municipalities decide to update the very outdated 2006 plan. The first phase, special study is underway. Rate dispute with the State College Borough. Do you have this in front of you? You didn't, you didn't get it? Yeah, I got it late and I, I didn't know whether Corey had sent it in. Okay. UHJA has filed a complaint in the Court of Common Pleas of the Center County, asking for the court to declare State College Borough's withholding of partial payment unlawful. In 2021, UHJA completed a rate study and adopted the rate in November 2021 to be effective January 1st, 2022. Pennsylvania Municipalities Authorities Act states that any customer that questions the reasonableness or uniformity of the rates are to file a suit in the Court of Common Pleas. The Borough has chosen instead to withhold full payment and pay based on volume electric rates that they paid in 2021. The Borough will continue to pay at the 2020 rate, which will mean they will pay 64% of what UHJA will be billing them. This sort of, when I first came on the board, this was just ramping up. They had, they had a contract, the Borough did. It was a 20-year contract and it ended December, I guess, 2021, and they didn't follow the rules. They just made up their own game plan. But, you know, that's pretty much of a popular way to go about things these days, so, you know, we're just trying to deal with it the best we can. As I did, they did pay half of what they owed last year, so that helped a lot. Putin Town Road Interceptor Act 537 Plan Special Study, the Borough is expanding sewer lines as described in the Act 537 Plan Special Study for Calder Way, adopted by the Center Region Municipalities in 2023. That special study requires an additional special study to address potential future surcharging in the Putin Town Interceptor Sewer in the vicinity of Millbrook Marsh. Flow data during the recent rain events will be used to calibrate the flow model. Draft Act 537 Plan Special Study has been submitted to the Center Region Planning Agency. It has been distributed by CRPA for comments. The comment response document and changes to the actual study report have been addressed. The next step is up to CRPA, and I'm sure there'll be another special study. I mean, it just seems like that's the way it goes, right? Solar array purchase, solar array number one purchase. The solar, the solar that UHJA put in was on a lease basis and with a lease to buy. It was done in two phases, and so UHJA is paying, is in the process of paying for the first phase while still leasing the second phase. Overall financial impact of major enemy, enemy, energy and treatment plant projects. Overall financial impact of major enemy, enemy. I didn't have anything to drink before I came. Major enemy and treatment, did it again. Let's just leave it at that. Treatment plant projects, solar phase one, solar phase two, biosolids, aeration, and ozone. Total project cost of construction from bond issues, $94.5 million. Total avoided future capital costs if we kept doing what we are during now and replaced aging equipment, $22 million. Reimbursed capital, ITC grant, $30.2 million. New capital cost of construction, $42.3 million. Net of operating decreases and revenue increases, $93.2 million. Net benefit of project over 25 years, $50.9 million. I don't know, I hope that means something. The, the biosolids, the dryers, and the, and the digesters, I thought was about a $70 million project, and they, the UHJA manages the finances of that by issuing bonds. I guess you all know that, but it's new to me, so thought I'd tell you. So, I guess that's it. Did you enjoy your trip, Paul?
I, I, I did. I, I really enjoyed it, and the kids always talked about going out there, and so I got to see it firsthand. And I will say, outside of the business and how everything works, my biggest takeaway is now I can tell folks in Pine Grove Mills, it takes approximately eight hours from when you flush the toilet for UHJA to go ahead and begin processing your delivery.
Critical point, that's right.
Yes.
Now, my next goal is to get Jenna Wargo to go see UHJA. I was shocked that she hadn't been there. It's amazing. The tours are always, you know, they welcome people, but then I find people that I would think, would have thought, oh, they must have gone, and they haven't. So that's part of my, my goal as, as a board member, is to get people out there. Now, Jason Werke at the CBICC meeting on last Tuesday, he said, and I already knew this, but he said it again, he said, "The UHJA is the best sewer authority in all Pennsylvania, and probably without a doubt in the top three in the United States." Now, how would Jason know that? Because he does jobs everywhere in the States. He's an amazing man. I mean, we're really lucky to have him in Center Hall. He's just incredible. That's what his dad, of course, but, yeah. You know Ken Burns used to stab in the Civil War series. He was the local Civil War expert, so. Thanks, Jason Stad.
I did mention the tour at my Lucy meeting and said, when I had my last Lucy committee meeting, I mentioned the tour. That was actually something I was going to note, and everyone was interested in, in doing it from the other municipalities, so I expect Corey will hear from either COG or those municipalities, too.
Any comments or questions online?
Yeah, just, just one for me, and thanks Wes for all you do, sir. More of a take back unless you know the answer now, but I was very curious. Uh, more of a take back unless you know the answer now, but I was very curious, uh, there's this, been this rate increase a couple times, along with the letter saying, hey, it's the Borough's fault. Once it's all settled with the Borough, and if it goes in the way that we all hope that it does, where everybody pays their fair share, is, are the rates gonna come back down for users, or are they gonna keep the same and kind of pocket that money for future projects?
Well, the billing process, I think, is gonna stay the same. It's gonna be, stay with E D Us. And that's one living unit, which consists of, uh, I think it's 48,000 gallons a year. But until, gonna beg off here, until the rate study has been resolved inside the board, I'm not gonna say anymore. Not because I don't know more, but I just think it'd be wise not to. We're hoping that maybe the rates could come down. That would be nice for everybody, so. But beyond that, I'm a vote.
No, that's great. No, I, that, I asked the question just, um, you're already thinking about it, and I really appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I mean, in municipality, municipalities Act or Code or whatever it is, it have, the rates have to be, um, I don't know if it's here or not, they have to be fair and equal. So we have to stay in those bounds, you know? All right? Any more questions?
Anyone else? I believe I shared it with Mr. Conkle, but, uh, I had had residents questioning those rates, and I, I think it's starting to come in, after getting so many of those letters, it's, I think some of them are starting to question the fairness of why, why are my rates going up, citing that the, the neighbor, the neighbor.
Did you know anything about why they went up?
What was that?
Because when I came on the board, they were 103, I think, a quarter, and now they're, what, 116, 121? What do you pay?
I, my, mine's included in my house, housing, housing cost, so I, I don't pay.
Matt, do you know?
I don't recall. Yeah, I got the quarterly bill and off it goes.
Okay, well, I think it's 121 right now, and it's not here for me to say, but why it went up was because, uh, we would lose our very, very good bond rating, uh, if we fell short, and, and we did fall short because of the, the conflict with the Borough. So that's why the rates were put up, I think they went up to 113 and then they went up to 121, something like that. And hopefully, when everything gets squared away, they'll come down.
Well, I thank you for your report.
Okay, I probably said more than I should, but I'll probably catch that all in a minute. Good night.
Have a good night. All right, uh, that brings us to five four with our COG and Regional Committee reports, and we'll start with Finance Committee, Mr. Heller.
All right, so Finance Committee, uh, for those following along at home or in the agenda, which by the way, I apologize, I was just pulling up the actual, um, agenda here. The, uh, a couple different things I wanted to focus on. First, the Strategic Guide to Services and Investments, uh, which is one of the topics we talked about. I raised, the discussion that we had here back about a multiplier, maybe based on growth, and, uh, we should go ahead and raise that again when we have an opportunity for municipal input, which will happen between now and, of course, July 18th, when that information has to be back to, um, COG. So that is going on, uh, because the current formula, of course, does not account for growth, so that was one thing. Uh, we did review the, sorry, I'm gonna be pulling up and switching between multiple screens here. Um, we did review the Strategic Guide to Services and Investments. One of the amendments that we had to the, to the motion was, again, that we were only talking about the, um, the organization of the Strategic Guide and Services of Investments. We weren't talking about the content. We were talking about the layout, we were talking about the structure, et cetera. So that will be referred to, um, you know, that'll be coming forth, uh, and referred, I'm sorry, to the Executive Committee, which you probably saw.
Yeah, and it's, it's now here, so the Executive Committee must have approved it.
Boom, there it is. So that's what I'm saying, it was kind of ships passing in the night with some of these things. So there was that, and I want to draw folks' attention then to the Budget Guideline. So, um, one of the things that I wanted to mention, and I apologize because I am still switching between screens here, oh, not so much the Budget Guidelines, I will move on to the Municipal Share Formula. We're going, we asked that it be put on a future agenda item because it was a hot-button topic for us here in the township, as well, I believe, as others. Uh, one of the questions that was raised was how the 18 to 24-year-olds are removed from the formula. Um, apparently that was done historically, but whether or not that's correct, uh, I think a larger conversation, and some of others do as well, a larger, wider conversation about what impact removing the 18 to 24-year-olds currently has on the formulas, because they are not in the formula. So, Adam Brumball will also be, uh, providing historical details, or at least, uh, maybe a digest of those will be provided by Adam to, to COG, so we can at least hear his, his store perspective on that, too. And then finally, as a matter of record, there was no IRS penalty for 2023, so because we got ahead of it, the $7,200, as I think I had mentioned here in a previous meeting, that was waived, so we didn't have to pay that, and there are no penalties for the 2023 era that was related to the same one, where we essentially called it out and put ourselves out there and asked for, you know, just offered our apology, and the IRS said, apology accepted, no fee, no fine. So that was it. Happy to answer any questions?
Yes, Mr. Strickland.
So back to the 18 to 24-year-olds being removed. So in the notes, it said they're removed for the Borough and College?
For Borough, right, for the Borough and College, that's how I understand it, but then, of course, the question was, well, yes, so then the question for me, when we think about taking up conversations, is what does that mean for the large apartments that were built off Whitehall Road and our residents that are part of Ferguson Township? Are those just not even included in that? Are they included in that, et cetera? That wasn't what they presented, that Borough and College don't have those folks included? But again, we have to run that to ground. I don't know through the conversation what that looks like. So I don't want to speak out from more than they, I was told. Anybody have some historic information? I mean, besides Adam, he seems to be the guru or the knowledge keeper on this, why they were removed.
Because I knew they were removed, but I thought they were removed for the others as well.
Maybe they are.
So that's surprising, because why would they only be removed for College and the Borough? I don't know if maybe one of the, some of the dorm buildings are actually in College, but that wouldn't be 18 to 24-year-olds, that's only 18 to 19, really, so.
I'm not sure.
Yes, I, I guess let's follow up on that, because, um...
Awesome, when was this last addressed?
All good questions that we have to bring up for that. I mean, that's the issue.
Because, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking right now, like, both in Patty and I's Ward, there, there is definitely a significant stock of housing now. I, I think Ward Two has kind of gradually grown in the last, maybe say five, well, probably going back 10 years, but then even, look, well, not, not to go off too far off-topic on this, but even over, over in Patton Township in Top Trees, there's been a significant uprising of, uh, housing within that age demographic. So how, how have they, how's that factored into their contributions and whatnot?
All of this will be verified and talked about, and luckily, we do have it on a future agenda, you know, because there seems to be a lot of uncertainty in the room already as to what, and then Adam's name was brought forward, and it was kind of like, oh, somebody, maybe one person knows all about this. That wasn't a very reassuring statement, so.
There's several records that I'm happy to forward on to the board prior to your discussions, so there are correspondence from 2012, 2016, uh, where it identifies what that formula looks like. So Joe Vajalum would do a really nice onboarding for those that, that came in from the period post decisions as to how the COG formula was determined. Uh, so yes, it is my understanding that the American Community Survey that we referenced to pull out 18 to 24-year-old population, it applies to Ferguson Township as well.
Okay.
The, the formula does vary slightly for, uh, contributions to one or two of the programs through COG, but all of that will be in some materials that I'll forward along for your review prior to that discussion there, where Adam, I'm sure, can answer questions.
Thank you. And again, I think what you just stated there points out one of the things that, you know, concerns me. Last visited, you know, 2016, nine years! And, and I think that's part of the discussion, because we heard that number last year, and I think this is now getting more traction about looking at these numbers, um, and then understanding how the formula works.
And as I'm jogging my memory, there's been some housing stock within that age demographic that has, came about within that timeframe.
And last year, we did talk about, we did play with the formula a little bit, like, putting 18 to 24-year-olds, olds in, taking them out. What does it do? And there wasn't that much of a difference. However, the whole formula, if it's not impacted by that number significantly, knowing that we're in a college town, that tells me that maybe the formula isn't really capturing the things that it should. I, I have concerns about a formula that isn't, you know, significantly impacted by adding a whole bunch of people in or taking a whole bunch of people out.
Yeah, not, not that I would want to knock formulas, but
No.
There, there is also part of my brain, like, was that always the best method to get to the outcome? Is there a different way to calculate it? Is there a different practice?
Yeah, okay. I guess I'm just wondering what's been used so far in some of these preparations, like the Strategic Guide.
So, okay, the standard COG formula, everything that's been approved to date.
Since 2016, or?
There's various years, um, where there were adjustments made, right? So when we, for example, Ferguson Township's contributions may look different for the library compared to what the Borough looks like. So I have a nice little document that breaks out when each of the COG formulas may have been adjusted and what year. So like 2016 is a year where we had municipal managers while I wasn't here, or I was at the Borough, but, um, it was vetted that there was an adjustment to the planning local formula. So I'll provide a document that'll give you kind of a quick scan, hopefully it'll prepare you for that conversation. I'm sure Adam is, and I think every manager, um, will be happy to appoint Adam Brumball to be the, to answer all of the elected official questions. So happy to hear it's Adam.
And if I could make a request, um, Madam Manager, when that sends, could we also send it over to the Executive Director of COG, just so he has that history as well?
Absolutely, yeah. I have several documents that I retained from my, um, meeting with Joe when I, when I onported, absolutely.
But that's fine, that was my question, I just didn't want something to be changed from past practice without us knowing about the, the ages.
I think, yeah, I, I can't speak, um, on behalf of Kimberly, the Finance Director for COG, or Benistell, the Executive Director, but I can't imagine that a change like that would happen without it being discussed with the elected officials and the, and the managers as well, and there's been no discussion on that.
Unless our cost goes down to zero, then I think that's all right.
Well, in which case, we might all support that.
Okay, cool. What else?
Don't think I went online, but if they have any questions, we can take those. Yeah, looks, looks, looks like we got it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank, thank you in the committee for your, uh, diligence. Um, I know finance has been at the forefront of a lot of elected officials over the past few years, and, uh, continue to look forward to the collaboration and, uh, whatever mechanisms of sustainability that we can achieve during those, uh, budget talks is well appreciated. Uh, next committee is the Human Resources Committee, and we went to meet, but then had to cancel because we did not have a quorum. Uh, the, um, I can share, uh, that the, uh, between Ben and Becca and, uh, they, there was a reach out, well, a review on our code of conduct, but also a reach out, uh, to the COG solicitor. Were rather limited, um, in what we can do if a elected official acts out. There, there is like certain protections. Now, one thing that the solicitor did point out, um, if a elected official, say, outside of a meeting, uh, says something bad about an agency director, which unfortunately, we have had three incident, incidents of that, they're saying that outside of a meeting, that particular staffer could personally sue that elected official. And they are not. They're at least gonna, not gonna get any representation from their municipality, so they're, they're gonna be on their own if, uh, they, they go to court. So, again, our options are limited, but, um, whenever H R meets again, we'll take another, another look. We, we want, ideally, we're looking to at least update the code of conduct to just put emphasis on executive commit, executive sessions, uh, personnel, just confidential topics and, uh, just bring a greater awareness and gain better understanding of what is expected of an elected official when handling, uh, sensitive matters and, uh, and just kind of emphasizing, like, just be respectable, you know, whether in a meeting or outside of a meeting. Ultimately, that's gonna be their choice. Um, we, we, what we would hope, you know, for civility both in meetings as well as outside of meetings when it comes to conduct, so.
Be a decent human being.
Yes.
Period.
Any questions on H R? Otherwise, I'm gonna have more to expound upon in Executive Committee. Uh, next one is the Public Safety Committee.
So I'll keep this brief, Public Safety Committee, they did meet with a quorum and, um, just a lot of updates. I think the, the recent storms and, and outputs from that have, have been associated, kind of some, uh, briefings and, and updates, uh, from various stakeholders, including First Energy and, and our Emergency Management Director, Jonathan Ristler. So, um, just a lot of, a lot of discussions in that, in that area.
Any questions? Thank you, Omari. Uh, so Executive Committee, uh, I, I am pleased to report that we were pretty much done in two minutes today. Cintris is laughing because I, I actually talked to Cintris briefly after the meeting. We still met for nearly about an hour. The Executive Director did talk extensively in the public portion of the meeting, uh, just regarding the code of conduct. Ben, like I had said earlier, there has been three incidents where an elected official has publicly, uh, made negative comments regarding staff, and Ben, you know, in, in his right is going to stand up for his staff and just reemphasize if there is any issues or concerns with staff to bring them forward, those concerns forward to him. Uh, if there is a staff concern and even... If there is a staff concern, and even, and there happens to still be some dissatisfaction with Ben's handling of that, then you got the Executive Committee to go back to where, you know, we, you know, yeah. Couple other, that was the other thing too, I'm not going to go into all of it, but Ben did bring up about several matters of misinformation that has been disseminated by an elected official, and just was in to set the record straight. I know it was brought to my, Ben and I's attention following the April General Forum meeting, when we made the motion to, for the budget amendment to purchase the Upfit Duty Officer Vehicle. There was some accusations made that by Mr. Patterson making that motion that got dubbed the Patterson padding by going from adding like the $3,000 on to the motion that was in violation of Act 65 that prohibits changing or modifying agendas. Staff, COG staff has reviewed that, that COG was with, within proper bounds. We, we had the agenda posted with that item on the agenda, nine, over 90 hours in advance. And just because there was a recommended motion, doesn't mean we have to follow that motion, right? Elected officials have the right to adjust the emotion at any time. As a matter of fact, if you actually look into the text of Act, Act 65, all you really need on the agenda is the topics of discussion. But someone just getting some facts misconstrued, thought, oh, well, by changing that recommended motion, it was outside the law, but bottom line is COG had followed the law. There was also a remark made, nobody was refereeing the General Forum. And I'll just say, the Chair and Vice Chair do ensure adherence of procedure rules during the meeting, and there is COG executive staff that observes and assists if needed. So I would just say, if any member feels that a procedure is not being followed, they can raise a point of order during a meeting. Interestingly, if you recall that night, no point of order was made, but someone later on in a public setting, just making a bunch of remarks. Also point out, there was also some remarks made regarding the General Forum meeting frequency, and I would just elaborate that the COG articles of agreement state that General Forum should meet at least six times a year. If there is no, if staff doesn't have any agenda items, and, you know, nothing's been brought forward to the Executive Committee, we're not, we'll cancel the meeting. As a matter of fact, today, we were discussing whether or not to even have General Forum this month, because all we have is a proclamation recognizing the YMCA to bring forward. We have no other business. We did discuss addressing some of the Executive Director's concerns regarding conduct and misinformation, but we didn't, the Executive Committee didn't necessarily want to meet just for that. I think there is a desire amongst the Executive Committee to address those at General Forum, but when there's a little bit more to the meeting than just, hey, you know, we, we have word of some misconduct and some misinformation, I, I did cancel that. So I, I would just say to anyone, if there is, like, even, even a committee as a whole, if there is a committee that really feels something needs to be addressed by General Forum in a given month, to just please communicate with myself or, you know, staff so that, you know, that, that is on our, our radar, because up until, especially last month, I, I wasn't aware of anything that was pressing any elected official. So when staff didn't have anything, and Ben called me up, I was like, yeah, you know, if you don't have anything to present to General Forum, you know, we'll, we'll just not meet this month, so. And the only other item that I would mention, and I, I want to say, you all are very good about this, is just committee attendance. My understanding, there was at least two committees that weren't able to meet last month or this month because of a lack of a quorum. But, you know, just reiterating, make sure you're alternative aware. I, I know, I, I think even both Patty and Lisa, there's been times where I wasn't the alternative of a committee, but you've even came forward to me. So we've been able to ensure that someone from Ferguson Township is in a committee. So I definitely appreciate the diligence in making sure of that, so. And that's all I have, as concisely as possible, without going on and on and on. But any questions or concerns?
No, just Jeremy, thank you for all you're doing there.
Yes, thank you, it's... I don't know if this was my idea of being a COG Chair, but we take what comes and, you know, addressing, and then, you know, I'm here to support, you know, the Executive Director and, you know, the rest of the General Forum members. I know I have had some members of General, various other elected officials that have approached me about the same concerns of things that are being said publicly, and, you know, they're just concerned, and, you know, we're, we're aware, and we're doing the best we can. And I saw, if there was nothing else, I saw there was a second Public Safety Committee. Ms. Trickland?
Instead of doing Public Safety again, I have a Lucy report I could share.
Okay.
We did meet, so maybe that, I was wondering if that was the switch up.
Yeah, I was going to ask that, and I was also going to touch bases, there was facilities. I didn't see that from, but it looked like they had met the last time this board had met, so. We'll start with Lucy, and then if whoever had facilities had anything, let me know.
They did not meet this month. Cancelled.
Okay.
And just really quick, everything was in the agenda. We're still working on the comprehensive plan update. We talked about the future land use map. And so I forwarded a summary of the meeting, because in there, there's a link to public input where you can comment on the future land use map. And I wanted to note that in the agenda for the last meeting, there were some really interesting pages of data that had some trends that are being used as part of the future land use map planning. So you might want to take a look at those. And coming up, there will be some engagement from staff with different stakeholder groups. In the summary, you can see what those are, developers, school district, CBICC, environmental groups, and realtors. So if there were comments on other stakeholder groups, let me know, so that I can bring that back. And like I mentioned when Wes was giving his report, I did bring up our tour of UAJA, and the interest in doing tours for elected officials and appointed officials as well, and staff for at least the different authorities, and that may be most easily planned through COG, and there was some interest there, so.
Any questions? We're just looking real quick at the email again, it's, resilient routes against extreme weather, and I just have to, a little bit out, way outside the region, but I, I noticed down in Somerset during one of the recent flood events, there was a bridge washed out, and within like, I think like, not even a week, Pendot had a temporary bridge backup, and just been phenomenal to see what all Pendots done. I, I remember at the, when we were up in Scranton last year for, I can't remember the conference. The PML Leadership Summit, you know, we got to hear from Mike Carroll, and he like, sounded off about like five or six different, like, complete infrastructure, bridge failures that within like a matter of like weeks, they had it back up and running. Of course, we all remember I-95, that was a very daunting task, but within, within a year, they got that back up and running, so. It's nice to have an MPO and be able to partner with them, and.
The MPO meets next week, so I'll have a report next month.
Okay, looking forward to that. Any other questions for Lucy? Not seeing any, I think I've covered all the reports, so. We will go on to the department reports, and I will recognize the manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided that the agenda includes a department report with a breakdown of sections, I will share with you, there was an inclusion added this afternoon, which is a memo to the board, just highlighting a breakdown, summary updates, or status update regarding the PPA. So as of June 16th yesterday, all 10 participating organizations signed the PPA contract documents. Greensky will now send those contracts to get the signatures with Prospect 14, the developer, and Direct Energy. The solar project, those of you who are following, may, may be aware that the location has now been identified to be in Sligo, PA, which is in Clarion County, which was an initial site that was once vetted and approved. The land development plan, I believe, is already approved. But there is an itemized breakdown of updates provided in the memo that is now part of the agenda for your review. There are several other updates that are provided, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? I def- definitely appreciate the update on the solar power purchase agreement. I think that has been able to address a lot of misinformation, which had been brought to my attention by other elected officials, so appreciate that. Did you have anything, Mr. Patterson?
I do, a couple of items just in the packet, if I may, Madam Manager. The first one was the ordinance with regard to the oak wilt on page two of your department report.
Yes.
And, and just the, I, I just wanted to just get a little bit of clarity that we, we commit funding and that we pay, or just the arborist or the sap guy to treat oak wilt?
Yeah, so the resolution, I believe, 2016 dash 32 requires that the township allocate funds to mitigate oak wilt identified throughout the township. And that allocation of funding is usually set forth in the annual operating budget.
Have we done any oak wilt work this year or within the past couple of years?
I don't believe that we've done any this year. I, I know since my tenure as manager, there's been some mitigation efforts, but I don't have any of that in front of me right now, so I wouldn't be comfortable referencing the historical data, but I'd be happy to bring it on in a future meeting.
I'll be there. And then the, I guess the, the inconsistency of in and out of regional growth boundary. I guess i- is it, what's the best way to, or to be more consistent? Is it to make sure that the oak wilt doesn't happen, or, or to, yeah. Can you help me understand what the, the consistency of the two ordinances would, would be?
So as, as indicated in the, in the note, there is, there's some punch conflicting language between the resolution and then the ordinance, and I believe the resolution, I probably have a data here, the resolution was enacted in 2016, and the ordinance was enacted in 2014. So the ordinance identifies that the township expects that there is a, oh, what's the word? Not a, oh, not a mandatory.
Mandated?
Oh, no, so I'll just use simple, basic terms. So essentially, in the ordinance, it says that from April to October, residents are unable to cut their, or prune their trees in the instance that oak wilt could spread. And so that is far more detailed and professionally stated in our ordinance. However, it, it only applies to the regional growth boundary. And so residents living outside the regional growth boundary, again, thinking about the fact that the township obligates funds to mitigate the spread of oak wilt, and we see a lot of trees outside of our regional growth boundary. If we don't have an ordinance that enforces residents to not prune outside the regional growth boundary, so it's equitably, the ordinance is applied in an equitable manner throughout the entire township, then we are at risk for allocating funds to mitigate the, the spread of oak wilt, which can be very devastating for our, for several environmental reasons. While we would, we would essentially subject ourselves to paying a lot to intervene and, and make those mitigation efforts, when we could just modify the ordinance, if the board would be interested to give consideration, to simply apply it across the board, apply the, not mandatory, what is it, a mor-
Moratorium?
Thank you. Moratorium. So essentially, if we apply the moratorium across the township, rather than just in the regional growth boundary, then we can hold our residents across the township in an equitable way to not, not prune. But they could still remove, and a removal of a tree will not spread oak wilt, but oak wilt spreads so quickly. I'm sure we can talk more about that at an upcoming meeting, and I've asked our, our urban forester, who has a wealth of knowledge and experience, we consider him to be the professional expert, I've asked him to go ahead and put forth a recommendation, so the board has some discussion points as part of the future discussion that we'll have likely at the first meeting in August. That's the tentative date to which we have this on your agenda for, for discussion.
I thought the word we were looking for was prohibitive.
Yeah.
But even moratorium works. A moratorium prohibiting the pruning of trees. Any other, any questions or collaboration on vocabulary?
I guess, for me, I'm just questioning how this is enforceable.
It's been a lengthy conversation between the urban forester and myself, and so in the event that the board does move in that direction, that we would apply it in an equitable way throughout the township, I would also then state that we would want to amend the ordinance, that it would be complaint-based only, because we would not have the staff to go and patrol all of the three wards. But we would be able to have language stated that it would be complaint-based, and/or if the urban forester would identify through the work that he or she would do regularly throughout the day.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, I, I kind of like that too, because, you know, our, our urban forester, again, heard very great remarks from, about them, and they, they seem very passionate about the job, and also very passionate to educate, and even assist residents when needed to ensure the well-being of our forest.
Yes. More to come at a future meeting.
Anything else for department?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I have more. Just, this is a really good one, really, really good data in here. I saw that also there was the- in here. I saw that also there was the fact finding hearing where the, from my understanding, Madam Manager, the township and the teamsters are getting to a, a full negotiation. And that now there's a report that kinda says where things are. I just wanna, you know, thank, thank you and staff and, and our, our, our team for, you know, getting, getting, you know, it was, it was a wealth of data in that report. And, and so, you know, this can be resolved soon. I don't, I really wish that this was resolved, but, you know, I guess everybody has their, their, their path forward.
Thank you. Yeah, just for clarification, negotiations continue, which is a confidential matter. But yes, there is a report that's available. It is considered a public document that comes from the Department of Labor, following the fact finding appointment. And it concluded with a report that again is public. So that portion of the process is available and accessible by the public. However, we continue to engage in those, well, we're in a, we're in a, we're in a state that further discussions would remain confidential.
Copy that. And just a couple of quick questions on the letters that, that were sent out on Mr. Rushton, Mr. Conklin, Senator Legarone. Could we get any responses, at least from the reps, on those?
We have not. And so those letters, I don't have them in front of me currently, but they were dated. I think I actually was drafting those letters when I was away at conferences that PML was hosting and/or associated through membership. So what I guess is not in my report is that I attended a risk management conference, May of, May 13th to the 16th, and that was through the association that I serve as a trustee for Penn Prime Board, which is our insurance provider, and PML members were there. And so then we immediately came back and then the Association of Pennsylvania Municipal Managers Conference was held from May 18th to May 21st. So I'm just acknowledging that, and then other representatives of PML that would have received the letter, Amy Sturgis, the lobbyist, and John Brenner, the executive director, they continued on with other site tours that they had. I imagine that we'll get a response in the near future, but I'm not surprised that I haven't received it, seeing as how I sent it during those conferences. But the board will be notified with any action items that are stated in their responses, of course.
I, I appreciate staff putting together those communications, especially regarding the newspaper advertisement of public meetings. I think one thing for the public to understand, we have a state law that requires us to state we're going to meet, but we gotta print it in a printed newspaper. But for those that have been following, there is only a printed newspaper two days a week now in this town, which, as I kinda realized the gravity of the situation when the Vice Chair and I met with the manager the other day, that really limits our ability on especially, well, how, how quickly we can arrange even like a special meeting, let alone when we're compiling this agenda, what all we can put out there. Unfortunately, if there's anything like late breaking that comes in after we submit to the newspaper, we kinda have to put that item on the back burner until the following meeting, which really does put a hamper on, on this. And I know PML for years has been trying to emphasize that, you know, we need some more modern ways to advertise for meetings. And I think with newspapers now going, some of them even in some parts of the country even going all digital, it just really shows more urgency for our laws to update with the times. Any other questions on department reports?
Just a one final comment in the police report, to see that they were uptick in DUIs last month, so that was a little disappointing. Hopefully we can get those backed down and our residents and visitors will be responsible in their consumption and getting behind the wheel. All for me.
I assume that's our, we'll go to Mr. Heller.
I'm trying to remember the date, I do not recall, but I believe it was back in May. Just a special shout out to Corporal Slater, Corporal Slater, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, because I believe I was one of the EMS assists, one of the 77 back in May, and it was very surprising and I was very happy to see Corporal Slater in my home with the EMT as well as the medic. And I went, oh, there's one of our officers here. So it was nice to see, you know, a friendly face and all of that. So I think it was May when this happened. So I just wanna say thank you to Corporal Slater.
We appreciate that. I'll make sure to pass that along.
Thank you.
Mr. Strickland.
Just a couple of quick notes. Thanks for including that update on the SPPA. I think I mentioned last time, my committees don't discuss that, so, you know, it's, it's great to have that update. And I assume we'll get an update at a general forum upcoming, because the locating that facility in the, in Center County seemed like a very important intention behind the project initially, to use it for educational purposes. So, you know, I'd be interested in the plan there.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll forward that along. I think I am starting to see some opportunities, and I believe it was actually discussed in State College Borough, the SPPA report will actually be a monthly report. But yeah, I, I had heard about the, the location change and looking back on it, Clarion County was a potential location all along, but even looking at the objectives of the SPPA, there wasn't necessarily like an outright objective that it must have been in Center County, or was, I know another thing that was brought up about educational opportunities for children, like, again, it wasn't necessarily really on the forefront. But going back to watching the State College Borough Council meeting last night, there was a particular person that did say, there are other solar facilities in Center County that they could work out MOUs that those can be educate, used as educational facilities for schoolchildren. Because I, again, we had heard that often on during the, during the SPPA, with it being in Walker Township, SCASD could send students, or I guess even any, you know, educational group could have gone up there and toured that facility, so.
Yeah, that was one of my last conversations about it. So it was an MOU with SCASD, but then also the technical institutes to be able to use that as a training area. So it, I'd be interested in the plan moving forward for that. And then, thanks for the printed strategic guide. Thanks for that. And then I just wanted to see if we had an approximate date for the CIP to come to the board for, to start to review.
Yes, July 15th. We will have it in front of the board for discussion, which is also the same evening that COG has requested to come to our meeting and present their strategic guide investment.
Or for ours.
Both will be on for July 15th. Well, actually, let me back up. Our special meetings that will hold the public hearing will begin to review them in June, June 25th and June 26th. And then after the board goes through and identifies what changes that they would like to see, then we bring back the modified, what we call also the final draft for the board to discuss at the July 15th meeting. But COGS, Matt, you'll have to help me here, strategic investment.
I'm just calling the strategic guide.
I gotta remember the acronym myself.
Okay. So, so we have the public hearings for the board to review all of the CIP for Ferguson Township request, June 25th, June 26th. Then it comes back to the board July 15th for authorization for a legal, authorization to advertise the legal, legal advertisement for the public hearings, or for the authorization to adopt the CIP.
Thanks. And I was just curious if you could possibly get that before the weekend, so that-
So the board will receive their-
Even if it's just the electronic one, I know some of us ask for hard copies, but-
Yes.
Even if we could just get the electronic one before the weekend.
Our finance director is back in on Friday, and I'll have an update for you on Friday.
And then I noted in the police report, the thank you notes from the kindergarten class, is that what it was?
Yeah, that's it.
That was so nice. And I wanted to share too, that the crossing guard at Ferguson Township also received some handwritten thank you notes for a couple of the classes. So that position is really valued over there, and it was just so generous of the staff at the school to allow them time to, to do that and share their thanks. So much appreciation on both sides for that.
I knew that drew a lot of smiles at the police department when those came in, so.
I bet, I bet. That's really, really nice to see.
All right. Anything else? If not, that brings us up to unfinished business. There is none. New business, consent agenda tonight. We have the CCTV pay application and a Stonebridge POA 4th of July parade. If no one wants to pull any of those items, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
This is Matt, so move.
Do we have a second?
This is Lisa, I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Heller, second by Ms. Strickland. I will check in with Mr. Patterson, understanding there might have been a time delay, anything?
No, no sir.
Okay. Just checking. I, I have noticed there seems to be a little bit of a time delay there, so wanted to be cognizant that we didn't skip over you there. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right. The next several items, they are timed. I'm gonna try to keep within the time, but any members of the board can make a motion to extend the limits of debate if we run on time.
I think you can cut them in half. I'm kidding, I'm-
Okay. So next we have a public hearing on a resolution to certify the provision of the local match for state operating and financial assistance to the Center Area Transportation Authority for fiscal year 2025, 2026. And I will recognize the manager.
Thank you Chair. Provided with the agenda is a great narrative describing the resolution certifying that Ferguson Township's annual contribution to this, to CATA for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026. The contribution is required under Pennsylvania Public Transportation Law. And of course, if you have any questions, Mr. Rishel is here with us and can answer the questions you may have pertaining to our requirement under legislation, which essentially mandates that the founding members are responsible for making these contributions annually. And for the upcoming fiscal year, the township has resolved to contribute $152,586 in operating funds, consistent with the funding schedule outlined in the attached resolution. And I'll just close my remarks there and acknowledge that Mr. Rishel is still here. So if you have any questions, I'm sure he's happy to answer them.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing, so I will open the floor to any members of the public that want to address the board on this matter. There is no one in the room right now, but there are three individuals online, so feel free to raise your digital hand or unmute and say hi and we'll call on you. All right. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. And I guess if no board members have like any clarifying questions, I'll take a motion at this time to-
This is Matt, I move that the board supervisors adopt the resolution.
And do we have a second?
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Heller, second by Ms. Stevens. Any board discussion? Yes, Mr. Heller.
Just a quick comment, I never like when we see increases, however, I know how important this is to the community. I know what happened when mouse roofs were changing, and we had outpouring from the community to keep things, you know, where they needed to be. So I appreciate the effort and the services that are provided. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree with that sentiment. And I'll say, it was nice to have that really comprehensive presentation earlier. We got to see the expansion of those services, just, you know, even the youth pass, the apartments and the increase in the CATA go. So that helped us when we got to this point.
Yeah. Anyone online?
Yeah, I, I echo those sentiments and it, it ties directly into my ask about kind of really, really pushing the services of CATA even more, or maybe more effectively. Just I, I think there's a, a, a unique opportunity if every one of our residents, you know, took, took five trips. I mean, that, that would just, it, it would, it would prove out, you know, that's a, a dollar a person contribution, or 75 cents per person contribution of tax dollars and the $2 it took you to take the trip. So I think, you know, that we are funding ready with the state, federal and our local match. We're funding the readiness of this, of this, of the system, and, and we just need more people on it. That's it. On two sides, over.
You had anything, Ms. Stevens? Darn, I forgot what I was gonna say. Well, yeah, go back to Matt's point. Yes, there is a increase in cost, but I think it has been well elaborated tonight. There is value in the service and that value is continuing to grow. And, yeah. I had another remark and I forgot it again. But yeah. That said, this is a resolution, so I will recognize the manager to call the roll.
Thank you Chair. This is the resolution for 2025-15. Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Resolution passes, names.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Tom. Next up will be a public hearing on a resolution attached for Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the submission of a grant application for automated red light enforcement, also known as an ARL-E. I will recognize the manager.
Thank you. Provided with the agenda is a summary of the ARLE grant and the eligible projects that have been identified. The deadline to submit for the application is June 30th. If the township is awarded funding, it is anticipated that a grant agreement would be executed in early 2026 with project design and construction taking place throughout 2026 and 2027. Ferguson Township has already coordinated with Pendott to develop a project that includes safety upgrades to existing uncontrolled pedestrian and bicycle crossings at three locations within the township. These locations would include areas alongside Park Road, Martin Street, and has, and as identified through a township initiated engineering study in alignment with the Federal Highway Administration everyday counts guidance and the Northland Area Mobility Study. And so, as discussed in a previous board meeting, I just wanna take a minute to acknowledge that part of the match, the up to 12% local match would be also eligible, staff's time would be eligible to be considered in kind local match, rather than dollars. And so provided with the agenda is a recommended motion that the board consider adopting the resolution that would support the filing for an ARLE grant to support these pedestrian and bicycle crossings at three locations identified that would offset the cost of approximately $383,000. Happy to answer any questions? Otherwise, provided with the agenda is a recommended motion.
All right, this is a public hearing, so seeing no one in the room, we will go to any public comments online. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And if there is no clarifying- Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and if there is no clarifying questions from the board, I would entertain a motion.
I do have a clarifying question.
Yes, Mr. Heller.
Uh, I'm sorry, the last paragraph says, "At its regular meeting on June 17th, 2025", which is today, "the Ferguson Township Board Supervisors approve the submission."
Is asked to approve.
Oh, okay, great. That makes sense.
Thank you.
My other question is, does the ARL-E grant, would this cover, are we specifically talking about the interest, the, where the bike path crosses the middle of Science Park?
The middle of a crossing.
Yes, that horribly dangerous, too many stories about people, hitting too many people. Great, thank you, those were my own clarifying questions. I'm happy to make a motion that the board supervisors move to adopt the resolution.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Heller, second by Ms. Stevens. Any discussion? If not, I will recognize the manager to call the roll.
Thank you, this is for Resolution 2025-16. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Chair, resolution passes unanimously.
Resolution passed. Next, we'll have a public hearing on a resolution attached to Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the Chair and the Secretary to execute and accept an easement agreement between the township and 900 State College properties IK6 LLC, well, P A Properties One, I guess that is. I'll recognize the manager.
Thank you, Chair. So 900 State College P A properties IKCLC is also recognized as the house there on the West College corridor. So with that noted, I'll just acknowledge that provided with the agenda is a resolution, it does authorize the Chair, the Secretary of the Board of Supervisors to execute an easement agreement between Ferguson Township and also the property recognized as the house. It just acknowledges that there is a light control that is on the private residence, the private property owner, and they are agreeable to giving us access to, to have an easement there so we can control the lighting before we act, so we can control and have access to the lighting system, the lighting control box, as we will take over that public amenity as well. So provided with the agenda is a resolution, and the board is asked to consider adopting that resolution.
This is a public hearing. Seeing no one in the room, we will go to online. And seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and if there, no board members have any clarifying questions, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Lisa, I'll move that the board supervisors move to adopt the resolution.
And do we have a second?
This is Matt, I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Strickland, second by Mr. Heller. Any discussion? If none, I will recognize the manager to call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. This is a Resolution 2025-17. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously.
All right. And that will then bring us to a public hearing on a resolution attached to Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing a winter maintenance services agreement between Ferguson Township and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. I will recognize the manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a well-detailed summary, providing a explanation of the winter service agreement. So, and it's initial agreement five years ago, there was this agreement for five years, understanding that the expiration of the fifth year, we would need to renew annually moving forward. And so essentially, this agreement allows for the execution, or this resolution the board is asked to adopt this evening would allow the manager, myself, to execute the winter maintenance service agreement with PennDOT, and then just act as the authorized representative on behalf of any amendments or documentation. This is the agreement where we allow partial SR26 there, where the house is, to about where the 26th and 45 intersect there, the traffic signal. And while there is some language that discusses compensation, we, we receive Ryan from them, and so it's a great, it's a great partnership, and provided with the agenda is a recommended motion for the board's consideration.
This is a public hearing, so I will, seeing none in, in the room, I will go online, see if there's anyone that wanted to address the board on this. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and if there is no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Lisa, I'll move that the board supervisors move to adopt the resolution.
And do we have a second?
This is Matt, I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Strickland, second by Mr. Heller. Any discussion? We will be going into summer officially next week, but better to get this done sooner than later. Because time keeps moving on. With that said, I'll recognize the manager to call the roll.
Thank you, this is for Resolution 2025-18. Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson? Or, Mr. Thompson?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Just for clarification, Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution passes unanimously.
All right. Communications to the board, I don't believe I have any, but just for the record, Mr. Heller, the last four timed agenda items, we were at half on two, on three of the four, so I appreciate your estimate on that.
Boating?
Yeah. Any communications to the board? Yes, Mr. Heller?
I have a communication related to trash pickup.
Anything else about trash pickup?
Oh, no, no, just the new contract related.
Okay, just, yeah, got it. If there was no one else with communications to the board, our calendar items, we have two special meetings on the 2026-2030 Capital Improvement Plan that will begin on June 25th at 6:00 and June 26th at 6:00 here in this room. And then, in the month of July, we'll have our municipal mixer at Autumn Wood Park. And if there's nothing further, I will recognize Ms. Stevens, who is back to present item 10.
A motion to, uh, this is Patty, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, do we have a second?
This is Lisa, I'll second.
We're adjourned, have a good evening, folks.
All right, good night, thank you.